Hello. Hello and welcome to the Pedestrian Safety and Vision Zero Montgomery County. We're going to start with the conversation. 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 We're going to start with the conversation.[519.83]
About philosophy and a philosophy that for too long didn't prioritize people and didn't prioritize safety and needs to. And so that's what this conversation is about. That's why I'm so pleased that you're here. I will continue to fight for these issues, to advocate for these issues, but we don't and can't solve it intersection by intersection. It'll take 90 years to solve the problem and we can't wait that long. So, thank you for being here and thank you for your commitment to these critical issues.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Craig Rice. I am a council member representing District Two, which is the majority of the Up County, starting with North Potomac and Montgomery Village, going all the way up to the Frederick County line. I chair our Education and Culture Committee and so part of the discussion today, which includes a lot of our safe routes to school, as well as school bus safety, people who are passing cars. Unfortunately, I had the distinction of seeing my child almost get hit by a car that decided to pass a school bus with its stop arm out. We've advocated for some great changes in the Up County and really want to thank our S H A partners for working with us to continue to make our routes safer, but there certainly is still more work that needs to be done. And so, look forward to working with all of you to make that happen. So, thank you.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Gabe Albonos. I'm one of your four at-large members of the Montgomery County Council. I have the distinct honor of chairing our county's Health and Human Services Committee and also serve on the Public Safety Committee. And as Chair of the Health and Human Services Committee, I do feel that this has reached the level of a public health crisis in our community. This has to be our highest priority moving forward because as we all know, ensuring the safety and security of our county residents is the most basic thing that we can do as a community and as a public body. So, we appreciate everyone being here this afternoon. Buenas tardes. Me llamo Gabe Albonos. Soy uno de los miembros del concejal del condado de Montgomery. Represento el condado entero y soy presidente del comité que está encargado de salud público de nuestro condado. Yo creo que este tema ha llegado a un nivel de crisis y es algo bien serio que tenemos que tomar bien serio y tiene que ser una prioridad moviendo adelante. Muchas gracias por estar aquí. Thank you.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Wade Holland. I'm the new Vision Zero Coordinator for Montgomery County. Clearly not used to using the microphone all the time, so, all sorts of learning curves. Again, thank you so much for being out here on a Sunday afternoon. I'm new to this role, but I'm not new to Vision Zero. I've been working in part-time as Vision Zero, kind of helping with the data analysis for the last two and a half years. So, it's not typical when you get stuck on a new job, you kind of know what you're in for. And part of the reasons why I actually took this job is with, you know, seeing a team down here with Captain Daidon, Adriana, my new boss in the county executive's office, Chris Conklin, the new director for DOT, Kristi Daffens with the PBT SAC and Casey Anderson with the Park and Planning Commission. You know, we have kind of the dream team here in Montgomery County and also with our S H A partners. I've seen, not just in the cam- in front of the camera, but also behind the scenes, that everyone's really working towards a goal of zero deaths on our roadways. And so, I said, "I want to keep doing this." And so, it was exciting to take on this opportunity and we look forward to hearing from you today.
Okay, I'm Andre Futrell. I'm with State Highway. I just want to thank the council for the invite. Hope you can hear me well over there. Ultimately, just want to share this. From a State Highway perspective, we certainly try to look at the corridor, look at any type of hotspot, trying to reduce our speed, narrow lanes, look at the crosswalk, the lighting and so forth. But, I must admit, this is a great platform because it allows us to hear about the concerns or the issue that exists before we have anything seriously happen. Okay? So, we are very, very happy to be here and we're just looking to hear exactly anything that we may not know. Certainly, certainly if it's anything that we do not know, we want to hear it so that we can document it and as we get back with what type of research that we have on it. Okay? Thank you very much.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Scott Pimento. I'm with the Maryland Department of Transportation, State Highway Administration. I'd just like to thank the council, as Andre said, for the opportunity to be here and partner with Montgomery County in their important Vision Zero effort. As a father with two small children, living in an urban area, I know how important this is in order to make sure that we get the right treatments in the right areas. So, again, thank you to the council for having us here today and I look forward to a productive afternoon.
Thank you. And we want to thank our partners from State Highway for being here as well. We've been joined by Councilmember Hans Reimer.
Good morning, everyone. I'm Hans Reimer. I've been on the council now for about 10 years and I've had the chance to work on a number of policy issues that I think are making a difference, but I have to say, we've got a long ways to go. We need to make safety the first priority when we consider transportation, engineering decisions, enforcement decisions. And it's not, you know? We talk about safety, it's a factor, but it really doesn't come first. That's the general issue we need to change. Some of the policies I've had a chance to work on that I think have been important recently, the battle over Little Falls Parkway and whether to enact a road diet there. There was a lot of discussion, a lot of debate. We pushed hard and we got the Parks Department there here and we put in, place a road diet. We need to do that. We need more of those kinds of fixes on county roads to start changing the culture of driving so that when people drive, they put safety for all users, walkers, bikers themselves, other drivers, first. We have a BIPPA program. It's called the Bicycle Pedestrian Priority Areas. It funds smaller, kind of quicker fix, infrastructure improvements in our older urban areas, some of them here nearby, Wheaton, Downtown Randolph and Veers Mill, Downtown Silver Spring. And we've had to fight year after year to refund that program. And this year, we're finally moving forward together with the County Department of Transportation to expand that and build that in some of the Purple Line areas. The subdivision staging policy, we changed rules so that new development has to factor in pedestrians. We have a neighborhood lower speed limit reduction initiative that we're trying to get instituted. So, there are some steps being made, but at the end of the day, you know, we need the community to be engaged. This only works when we work together. You can't wait for the government to solve this problem. It's not going to happen that way. It's only going to happen by your engagement, stepping up and making this a demand that the government responds to. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Just as an aside, in addition to being council president, I represent the Third District and which is, and I also chair the Public Safety Committee and I'm on the Government Operations Committee. But, the Third District is Rockville, the cities of Rockville, Gaithersburg and the town of Washington Grove. And I also represent all of Leisure World and parts of Aspen Hill, Redland, Potomac and North Potomac. And we are also very pleased today to be joined by Senator Ben Kramer and delegates Al Carr and Jared Solomon. And if I've missed any of my elected colleagues, I know they are not shy and they will let me know. And with that, we're going to ask Crystal and Lillian to please, to please begin the Town Hall part.
Thank you, Sidney. Our first question is here.
Hello, thank you for having this Town Hall today. I have to rush off after I make my comments because I have a cab, a wheelchair accessible cab, waiting for me. And unfortunately, I could not figure out how to get here cheaply and not have to try to go on Metro Access. But I'm a resident of downtown Bethesda. I've been there for like 20 years. And I think that there has been very little thought to given about wheelchair user safety, especially in light of all the construction. I had, because I wasn't sure I'd be able to get a wheelchair cab here today and back, I wrote down some comments about the dangers of crossing Wisconsin Avenue. And the fact is that I live in a apartment complex where there's like at least three power wheelchair users who don't drive. And, you know, it's very hard to get to like certain areas, like the CVS is what I mentioned in my, in my email to Ms. Healy of 4809 Wisconsin Avenue. They put in crosswalks, but six lanes I have to cross with a tiny meeting in between. And, you know, I don't know how I can notify all the drivers of the six lanes that I am crossing because there is no light there. I saw in the video that they had like a flashing light. I've seen at the Kenny Center, the sidewalks near the Kenny Center in DC, and I'm wondering why that isn't up, why all this construction was allowed to take place without thought to having continued sidewalk access. Like around, I guess, East West Highway and Wisconsin, they have like a build-out where you have a walkway that's covered. The only problem is that sometimes bicyclists also want to use that same walkway. So like, as I'm coming through, it's very narrow. You know, I almost get hit by a bicyclist. Of course, I almost get hit by a bicyclist anywhere. When I lived in California for a short time, I was like using BikePass all the time, but I don't know if any of the BikePass will be a safer option once, you know, these improvements are put in. I'm not sure what work you've done with the Montgomery County Commission on people with disabilities. I sat on the commission for like six months and created the Wide Enough for Wheels Snow Removal Campaign. Because I'm worried that like with the snow, it may or may not come this winter, which I hope it won't, that my access around Bethesda will be even more limited. And I know I met with Mr. Hucker several months ago at a meeting. So, and I did write to him about some problems I had, like on Old Georgetown Road heading in the direction of Rockville, that like some of the sidewalks that were there between Battery and like Huntington Parkway, you know, the trees were overgrown and things were narrowed. And, you know, those are hazards beyond snow that happen. So, I don't want to take up too much time, but these are the things. And I also mentioned the problem with Cordell, that cars turn in a million different directions without stopping.
Thank you. Thank you very much. We'd like to hear from as many people as we can, but Councilmember Fritzen did want to make one comment.
Yeah. Thank you so much for the point. When I said earlier, livable, walkable and accessible communities, it's a critical part of it is to make sure that they are accessible to people in wheelchairs and to people using motorized scooters and others. I have a bill that I've introduced that all of my colleagues up here have co-sponsored specifically addressing the construction challenge and making sure that same-side pedestrian access is maintained as the default and as the standard. And so, that will be going through the legislative process now, but the, my view is that a sidewalk should be viewed like a lane of traffic. We should only shut it down in extreme circumstances. Currently, that hasn't been the case. Previously, that certainly wasn't the case and so we need to move in that direction. And similarly, you mentioned Old Georgetown Road. I sent a letter alongside my T and E Transportation Environment colleague specifically looking at trash can and recycling bins, not being in the sidewalk. And to S H A's credit, alongside that, they have, on Old Georgetown Road specifically, started to move some of the obstructions out of the public right-of-way, out of the sidewalk so that it is more easily accessible. There's a lot more we need to do. We're working on a lot of things on Old Georgetown Road specifically, but in many other areas as well. But I think we're moving in the right direction there. It's just not happening fast enough.
Thank you very much. Next question, please.
It's over here. Would you please take it?
Good afternoon, everyone. Thanks for letting us be part of this meeting. And we are representative of the Association of Graduate of the City Institute Academy for Hispanic Community in Montgomery County. Our job is to build a stronger bridge between NCPD and the Hispanic community. In order to minimize and prevent criminal acts and traffic accidents, we also work as volunteers in the State Attorney Office in the TPP Program. We believe that education is the most important part for a person. And we are, we are around 30 people and we are leading many Hispanic communities. We go to Latino markets, church playgrounds, laundry, and we distribute paper like this. So, this is with our own budget, but we believe that we are trying to do something better for our community. So, we just want to let you know that we are here at your disposal for any purpose.
Thank you.
Our next question is here.
All right. So, my name is Sijja. I am from Roffel, Maryland. It's good to see all of you. My biggest concern is that I've been walking around the Montgomery County for my entire life and some of the biggest concern is that there is not enough sidewalk lane. For example, um, um, hold on. Nancy and Hans, I mentioned you came to YOCA MVA over the summer. And outside of the road, that there is no sidewalk lane for the customer to go through and, which is about that. And also, some of the speed limit is relatively high for some of the pedestrian to cross through is because you probably mentioned that there is not enough people who've been trying to, been careless of not stopping their vehicle to allow pedestrians to walk. And this is a big concern. And, so my question is that how can you add some of the extra lanes, including some of the traffic, traffic signal that allows the vehicle to turn right for the pedestrian to walk in order to do that? So, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next question, please. It's going to be over here.
My name is Juliette Rizzo. I'm a 21-year resident of Montgomery County. Thank you to the council members that are up there. I see Will Juwondo smiling. I used to work with him at the U.S. Department of Education. And yesterday, as Councilmember Fritzen and I were on our way to the memorial where my neighbor Brett Baden was indeed killed and memorialized yesterday, as we were walking and I was rolling in my wheelchair, a car pulled out straight in front of us when he put his hands up to stop the truck from hitting me in the wheelchair. So, this hits very close to home. And as a member of the disability community, both nationally and locally, I speak all over the country on 20, Vision, you know, Zero. And I need to make sure that we, as a part of the disability community, offer ourselves to help you with the solutions. There is an old saying that is "Nothing about us without us." And so, I just wanted to offer the solutions. The Surgeon General, previous Surgeon General, put out a call to action on walkable, rollable communities for the entire nation. If you haven't looked at that, I want you to share that with you. I also just finished a walking audit with Catherine Menkarini and the Montgomery County Planning Organization. And so, I wanted to share that with you. They put out an article, "Moving Beyond the Americans with Disabilities Act Standards." And so, once again, being part of the solution, I also wanted to just ask all of you. I live in a town center area, area where, you know, there are sidewalks cut off by construction. How are we working, as Hans said, with the design engineers? I just came in from Utah where I was called in on Vision Zero issues because the numbers of people with disabilities killed on the streets in Utah was so great because they had triple-wide lanes and the timing was off. And so, one of the things I asked to do is to speak to the engineers themselves. And I just want to share with you that if you haven't thought about it, and I talked to Wade yesterday, please engage everybody at all levels of the planning. One of the engineers in Utah said to me, "I've waited 20 years for somebody to ask me the solution." I'm always the one getting reprimanded for what didn't get done, but if I was at the table with people with disabilities, perhaps we can better see the solution. So, I wanted to ask you, how are you engaging the engineers to help with these solutions?
Councilmember Reimer.
Thank you for that question and for your participation yesterday in the memorial for Brett Baden and for all the work that you're doing nationally and locally. You know, on the positive side, I believe that when we are implementing or designing plans for the future now, we're putting in very strong considerations. We just redid the entire vision for the Veers Mill corridor, for example, from Wheaton to Rockville. And we laid out a completely different vision for that corridor. Isn't it incredible that that corridor could have been built without a sidewalk on Veers Mill Road? It shows the absolute lack of regard for pedestrian mobility and for people with disabilities in the planning of this county and by the state and by the local government in the past. We want to transition that to a much more, you know, accessible design and that will happen step by step. I think the real challenge is retrofitting what's there today. And we've got to get a lot better at paying for smaller improvements that have a bigger impact instead of really, really expensive, you know, projects that are more, that, you know, affect a smaller area. So, that's partly what the BIPPA program is about, but I think we need to do a lot more. When you're in DC, you can see those little ballers that they put up in intersections to make safe havens and it creates a culture of respect for the pedestrian and for all users. I think we need to be implementing those same kinds of changes that demonstrate everyone has a right to be here and everyone, you know, this is a fundamental access issue.
Wade Holland, please.
All right. Thanks. I'll be quick on that. So, one thing we've done as part of our two-year action plan was actually identifying our sidewalk gaps and also with the current inventory where there are significant issues like trip hazards. And so, we hope to continue to use that to help proactively make changes. As you said, some of these smaller programs that can be fixed in terms of like just, you know, shaving down places where it's become uneven. We've also been working with the commission with persons with disabilities. We'll actually hopefully have a joint hearing and meeting with our Pedestrian Bicycle Traffic Safety Advisory Committee and the Persons with Disabilities Commission to make sure that those conversations between those groups and with the government are still always ongoing.
Also, real quick, I'm sorry, forgive me. But any construction that's issued a permit such as actually developers, we require them to maintain the sidewalk and if they have to close a sidewalk, they have to detour the actual pedestrian to a sidewalk route that works as well. Okay?
Thank you for that. I just wanted to close out by sharing a creative example that you might want to consider. When I was in Utah, I talked to the engineers and they shared that they made people with disabilities a part of the complete solution by giving them construction hats like everybody else going through the construction zones and asking them what they needed to solve the problem. And with that, they were able to move, you know, bus shelter areas and everything else. And they also trained the entire construction crew to look out for the people with disabilities that would be coming through the areas so that everyone was a part of the solution. Thank you.
Thank you. Crystal, next question, please.
Right over here.
It's easier to fight hole because it's... I'm not going to take a bite out of it. Okay. My name is Judy Koenig. Mr. Katz, thank you for coming up here. Talk to me. This place, as I mentioned previously, does not comply with Americans Disabilities Act. All of us who have disabilities are forced to sit in the peanut gallery in the background rather than being able to have access to the full facility. So, the next time you select someplace, make sure it's fully accessible. This is not. My issue has to do with safety of children and pedestrians. And at my school, which is Rock Creek Forest Elementary School on Grub Road and Colston. When the school was built in 1950, I was in second grade. My brother was in fifth. I had a sister in first and one still in diapers. A good 22%, 22 of my family and cousins went through that school because we all moved into the community. The problem is there are no sidewalks except on one small block of Ellingson, one small block of Abilene and the eastern portion of Blaine Drive off of Grub Road. That means the kids walk in the street, four and five abreast. The school buses are not supposed to be on Colston, cutting through the community. That was an agreement reached with the community prior to the opening of RCF when it was rebuilt in January 2005. I've counted as many as nine school buses when the kids are trying to walk back and forth to school, going down Colston, going out at East West Highway where the average speed is between 50 and 60 miles an hour with the cars coming down the road, rather than 35, rather than going out the way they're supposed to, which is Grub Road, into the lot, out of the lot to Grub Road and out at the traffic light. They don't do it. The police won't do it. The police have told me point-blank, they will not enforce any regulations with people running the stop signs. At Colston and Ellingson, between 8:45 and 9:45 in the morning, I will document 80% of the cars going through that intersection and the trucks and the school buses running the stop signs, coming out of the school lot. There are two stop signs. Both of the school buses go through the stop signs. No one will do it.
Thank, Ms. Koenig. We understand the concern. We will, we will look into it. On this side, please. Was there... On this side, please. Well, if you have a question, please ask it, but we'd like to, if you can finish, please.
Same thing happens in the afternoon. I want to know why the police refuse to do anything about stop signs, why you won't get those school buses off of Colston. I've got one that goes Colston to Ellingson, cross Blaine, down Washington Avenue, out on Meadow Brook Lane and then cross East West Highway and it makes no stops. It's not supposed to be there. And when the kids walk four and five abreast in the street because there are no sidewalks, it's only a matter of time before someone gets killed. And apparently, the police and the county and the school board don't give a damn.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Koenig. We do not have an answer here today, but we will look into it. And on this side, please.
Hi.
Thank you, Ms. Koenig. We're going to hear from someone else.
Hello, my name is Kimblin Prasad and I live right here in Wheaton. And this question is for the state of Maryland. The state of Maryland says that immigrants are welcome. However, in areas where there's a high concentration of immigrants living in our communities, you, your answer to pedestrian safety is the black metal fences. Our prime example is on Georgia Avenue in downtown Wheaton, our downtown Wheaton, the Arts and Entertainment District. You're proposing to put metal fences in. However, in Bethesda, for example, in Andrew Freesden's district, one person was killed this past summer and they got the Hawk signal. However, in Wheaton, we can't get the Hawk signal without metal fences going up. We can't get Greenery unless there's a metal fence in the middle. I want to know why we're treated differently than other parts of Montgomery County. In every, in every, wherever there's immigrants, Langley Park, Randolph Road, Veers Mill Road, you have put up black metal fences and you're not understanding what you're doing to our community, the people who live here, how other people view us, you're hurting us. Thank you. I would like an answer.
Councilmember Reimer wants to answer that and then we're going to also have State Highway to answer it.
Yes. We certainly look at these particular, I guess, in some cases, we have put up a rail fence, whether we're trying to reduce or kind of not have the, what we call the uncontrolled crossings. And at some cases, we have also applied the Hawk. Certainly, I don't have the answer for this actual site here now, but I would certainly write that down, document that and as we get back, back, okay? But, one thing that we...
I want to know why... Do I want to...
Yes, yes, indeed. Thank you.
Councilmember Reimer. Okay. I guess, yeah. Crystal, please.
Good afternoon. My name is Susan Rich. I also live in Wheaton in the Connecticut Avenue Estates area. When I grew up, we learned to look both ways before we crossed, to give full time and attention to the wheel when we were driving. And I think we need to start with kids when they're young and get that lesson instilled in them so that they're not walking around now texting on their phones when they're crossing the streets and taking chances with their lives. Now, I just wanted to bring up a couple of things I've seen in my many years in this, in this area. Why are people taking chances crossing the streets? In this heavily Hispanic area, people are taking the bus. They are desperate to get to their jobs on time. Many people who take the buses, not just Hispanic people of a lower socioeconomic level, let's be honest about this, and they do not have, leave if they're late for work. So, they literally are diving in front of cars to get to the buses sometimes. And if I'm not paying attention, I could hit someone. I really urge you all to look at the crosswalk situation, have it more in sync going to the bus stops, but also don't have people think that just because they step into a crosswalk, it's a safe thing to do. You need to look and make sure there are no cars coming. Okay? I have crossed Connecticut. I have crossed George Avenue many times safely, looking both ways, et cetera. But there are people who do not pay full time and attention, looking at their phones. There was just a video on the news last week showing a woman walk, not in this area, but it happens, I'm sure, around here, walking into traffic, texting on her phone. Literally, someone ran out from the sidewalk to grab her back. We can't have that happen. No, I wanted to say one other thing. I wanted to say one other thing. We've got to start when it's young and educate folks about being careful. If not, we're going to continue to have, you can put up all the crosswalks, you can put up all the stoplights you want. It's not going to stop people from taking chances. Last thing. This is going to sound a little un-PC, but several years ago, I was seriously injured when I was... when I fell off my bicycle. I was on a bike path, asphalt. I double fractured my jaw, bleeding profusely. It was a very serious injury. And I will say this about the bicycle situation. Anyone who rides their bicycle in traffic is taking a chance with their lives. There's got to be a better way to integrate bicyclists into the, the community without putting themselves at risk and drivers at risk. We all want, we all deserve to be safe. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Rice.
So I'm going to be very, very quick to answer your question. I couldn't agree with you more about education of our young people. Right now, our current MCPS policy is one in which it's up to principals to decide whether or not they're going to hold education campaigns with the children. I've actually been in communications with Superintendent Smith, as well as the school board, to actually change that policy to mandate that we do have education programs for every single one of our kids. It's incredibly important. I will just tie it. Gwen Ward, who's the mother of Christina Morris Ward, who lost her life crossing, crossing over 118 in Wisteria, has been adamant about this for a very long time. And getting these kinds of programs into every single one of our schools, it's incredibly important. And so you're right, we do need to make sure that we're educating every single one of our kids, not just those who, whose principals feel as though it's the right thing to do. So thank you for that.
Councilmember Juande, we had a comment.
Thank you. Thank you for your comment, and thank you, Councilmember Rice. This is a big issue. Last month, about six weeks ago, I launched an initiative, a regional initiative, and joined with Prince George's County and Fairfax County in Washington DC called Driving at Home, which is an initiative aimed at attacking and changing driving culture, starting with our students. We have almost 50,000 high school students in Montgomery County. That means every day, tens of thousands of them are getting in a car or making their way to school through walking or biking or catching the bus. And starting young is extremely important. So we launched at Blair, the largest high school in the state. We're going to be making our way, working with the Department of Transportation, working with the Police Department, working with the school board. Dr. Smith is on board, launching this education initiative across the county, and it's going to be, make a big difference if we really invest in it. The other thing I want to say, I've also been working with our school board member, student school board member Nate Tinby, who introduced a resolution that successfully passed to reintroduce drivers' education into the high schools, which left since the 1990s. And so the superintendent's going to be looking into ways to do that in a cost efficient way. I think we need to support that if needed. That is a critical component, along with design and enforcement, of starting early and changing the driving culture and creating that culture of respect for everyone on the road that my colleagues have talked about. So I appreciate the question.
Thank you. And I, just as one on the side, and we're going to get to Lillian. Last night, my wife and I were going to dinner, and a young man, it was, it was an adult. It was not a child. A young man was walking across the street with earbuds in his ear. The light turned green. He didn't care. There was three lines of traffic, and thank goodness, he was not struck. But it was only by luck that he wasn't. He was not paying a bit of attention. We need to, everybody needs to be educated, and we need to make certain that our neighbors are safe. Please, Lillian.
Hi, my name's Tina Copeland, and I live near Bethesda. And I've been a pedestrian, I am a pedestrian, and I find it odd on Wisconsin Avenue, this is specifically to the State Highway Department, that whenever there's construction, it's the pedestrian who has to cross six lanes to get to the other side and the narrow sidewalk that they find. The second thing is, I have been a bike rider until this past year, when I also had a bike accident, but I'm happy that I'm not disabled like some of the other people who are dealing with that situation. But I, as a, as a bike rider, I was grateful that there were sidewalks that you're allowed to ride on the sidewalk because the street is so dangerous in Bethesda. And my question there is, what is the story about the sidewalks on Wisconsin Avenue, which should be at least 10 feet wide to allow for pedestrians, safety, and bicyclists? And I was always very careful about pedestrians, but you do need a wide sidewalk because people, there are restaurants on the, seats out on the sidewalk, there are all kinds of obstructions. So you do need a 10-foot sidewalk. I have, also, I ride, drive a car. And just today, I came on Hampton Lane, heading towards Wisconsin Avenue, and there was a truck blocking the visibility of people, anybody crossing that street. So even as a, driving a car, it's unsafe. Also, the allowance for developers and closing of any lanes. At night, one day, we were going down in Bethesda South, and there were three cement trucks taking up, in addition to construction, taking two lanes of this, of a three-lane side, highway. So there are all kinds of complications. Bethesda is supposed to be, become a utopia for pedestrians and bike riders. I don't quite see how that's going to happen. So my question is, what accommodation is there for citizens, let's also call us taxpayers and voters, versus developers and what they would like?
I, I certainly appreciate that, and certainly it is a challenge. We meet with the actual developers on a routine basis. We also meet with the, the actual groups out there. And we constantly having to make sure that there's a pedestrian route through the construction sites where this work is actually being done. We have made some headways, but certainly there's more to do. But just so you know, we constantly meet with the developers, the EBCA, and we try to work with everyone to make sure that the pedestrian movement is adhered to and try to make sure that there's a, there's a pathway or pathwalk that they can use. But again, this is not a done deal. We constantly looking for how we can get better, what can we do more than what we have? And we constantly looking at ideas of actually doing that.
Thank you. Councilmember Fries.
Yeah, I appreciate it. I mentioned earlier, the bill that we're working on at the county level, which is focused on county roads. We're obviously interested as well on the state side of it. Delegate Corman is working on similar efforts at the state level because that is a large bulk of the challenge, where the most heavily trafficked, both with vehicles, pedestrians and bicyclists, and the heaviest construction activity are oftentimes on state roads. And so he's working on that as well, and we're working really closely with him on those efforts.
Thank you. Crystal, I believe you have the next question.
Yes, hello, my name is Susan Crawford. I'm from Silver Spring. And so I just have two quick questions. One has to do with the bike lanes that are going on adjacent to sidewalks, which then blocks any ability of someone who needs a ride share or a car, a ride to, to get a vehicle because you've got the parking stops all along the edge of the bike lane. And so that's not good for a lot of people with disabilities. And then the, and then you've got the floating bus stops. I mean, I will thank the county because the transportation folks and ride-on folks have taken a lot of the recommendations we've made for that. I am blind, and so the biggest concern about floating bus stops is I don't know where the heck they are. So they're, they're making improvements on that, and I appreciate it. But I'd like to ask that you continue to do that. I would like to make a comment on that people should look both ways, okay? Everybody needs to take care of yourself. I look both ways. I'm blind. I had normal vision until I was 25. I got a parking ticket once for coming to a rolling stop, not stopping completely at a stop sign. That was back in the days when police officers gave tickets in Massachusetts. When we moved out here 21 years ago, when there's a walk sign up there, all the cars had to stop. So as a pedestrian, I didn't have to worry about cars turning left or right or doing anything on my crosswalk. I had that crosswalk available to me for that time. And I don't know why on earth they don't do that down here. If it's, if it's a signaled crosswalk, and it's a pedestrian signal, then why, you know, I've got cars and bikes and scooters and everything else, and then they're telling me to look out? You know, it, it makes no sense.
Thank you. Lillian, I believe you have the next question.
I have a young lady right here. Your name and your... Can you stand up?
My name is Elise Lee, and I'm in third grade, and I go to Lux Manor Elementary. Something that my family has been wanting so much is a sidewalk on our street, Markliff Road. One reason we think that is because some people, I've seen some people just walking on the side of the road and cars just rushing by and the driver's not even looking up at them. Another reason is that I can't walk to my school. That just reopened really close to my house because there are so many cars, trucks, and buses on the street. I have heard some children have been hit by buses near here, and because my school has reopened closer to my street, there will be more buses and cars passing on that street. So it makes it very dangerous for children and adults to make it to their destinations. My mom would like to make some comments. Thank you.
Before, before your mom makes some comments, let me say, you did a, you did a great job. You deserve a second round of applause. Mom, you have every right to be proud. Go ahead.
So, yeah, I think my daughter made the case for the sidewalk on Markliff Road, and I think that it's particular. I know the sidewalk issue is alien in a lot of communities, but Markliff Road is the only street that connects Tilden and Tuckerman Lane. It's the only major thoroughfare. And there are four different schools in this residential area, and there are school buses, cars, trucks passing by all the time and with no sidewalk. And with the reopening of Tilden Middle, that's going to be on Markliff, as well as the reopening on Lux, of Lux Manor on Tilden Lane. I mean, there's schools that will be co-located within those schools as well, so the number of buses, trucks, and children that are walking is only going to exponentially increase, and it really is a concern from a public safety standpoint. I have another child who goes to Tilden Middle School. I just want to go through just a couple of challenges, and then I do have a question. And so we are on the corner of Markliff and Tuckerman, and there's no crosswalk to cross Tuckerman Lane, which is a very busy road. I think Old Georgetown Road, between Old Georgetown and all the way probably to Seven Locks Road, is a long stretch of Tuckerman Lane with nowhere to cross. And there's a bus stops, and so basically, he has to run across the street on Tuckerman Lane if he wants to get to the other side of the road. And when he's walking home from Tilden and trying to cross Old Georgetown Road, there's a light there, but no crosswalk, so he can't cross Old Georgetown Road unless he runs across or tries to go a roundabout way that takes about over 15 minutes just to cross one road. And let's be honest, middle schoolers, it's going to turn into Woodward soon. You know, teenagers are not going to have the patience to sit there waiting and waiting and waiting. They're just going to run across. And, and so my question is, with respect to the sidewalk my daughter was referencing, there were some proposals to put sidewalks in part of that neighborhood, and there, it was a very divisive issue with the homeowners. And there's about 10 to 12 houses that would be impacted because we're only asking on one side of the street. It doesn't need both sides of the street, just one side of the street. And there is opposition with homeowners to having a sidewalk in front of their house for, for understandable reasons. I can see where they're coming from. But at the end of the day, what is the, how will the decision be made if an individual homeowner does not want a sidewalk in front of their house, but it's an issue of public safety? You know, I think there's going to be a public hearing, I was told. How is that decision made in terms of individual homeowners not wanting a sidewalk when it's a matter of public safety?
Councilmember Fries.
Thanks, thanks for raising the issues. Matt Higgins on my team is going to get our, my information to you, and we can follow up specifically on Markliff and some of the other specific sidewalks that you, that you referenced to, to talk about that challenge and can walk you through the process for how that works specifically. And I did, just because you mentioned an area where there's a lot of schools, I mentioned the schools, but Jared Solomon is here, and Jared, Delegate Solomon, has a bill to require a pedestrian safety plan for any school that receives state funding for either a renovation or a new construction build. So that's a big change, and if passed, would be a major improvement because, you know, as Councilmember Rice mentioned earlier, the walkability in and around schools is a critical issue and was made even more apparent recently with some tragic events that we've had to deal with in our community.
Councilmember Ream.
Thank you for your question. When I moved onto Ritchie Avenue in Silver Spring in 2004, some of my neighbors have been fighting for a sidewalk for years, and others have been fighting against it for years. And as a result, no sidewalk was built. We finally got MCDOT to come out, and rather than having everyone push their own specific plan, we asked MCDOT, what would you do? How would you tackle this? And we finally broke through, but, and there's a sidewalk there today, and I walk on that street, and I'm so grateful because it's one block from a, a middle school, just like in your case. I think the underlying challenge is that MCDOT says there are, there are far more blocks and communities that need sidewalks than, than we are building right now. So if there isn't community support for it, then we'll move to a community where there is support. That, you know, I will qualify that with, with one fact, that they'll say, if there is a very clear safety need, then we will build a sidewalk regardless of whether the community wants it or not. I, I wonder if we really need to try to evolve that thinking and, and say, this doesn't have to be a majority decision. We don't need 50% of the neighborhood to agree to a sidewalk, you know? Maybe if 25% of the neighborhood agrees that they want a sidewalk, that should be sufficient because fundamentally, this is about rights and about safety, and it's not about aesthetics. But for a lot of people, it's about aesthetics. So I, I think we have to look at some of those issues. It, it shouldn't be as hard as it is to get a safe, to get a sidewalk. When I, on that block that I lived on, there was a, a father who was blind, and he walked in the street to his job. There was a daughter with special needs. There was a daughter who was profoundly hearing impaired, and they were all in the same block with this one guy who was pissed about the angle that his truck was going to be able to take to get into the driveway. And he managed to hold it up for years. So that's the, that's the reality of the situation. It's not right, and it needs to change.
Crystal, I believe you have the next question.
Right here.
Thank you. My name is Frank Roberts, and I've got a prepared statement. Four minutes or less. Thank you for the opportunity to speak this afternoon. I'm here with my sister, Mary Beth, and our parents raised us in Montgomery County along with our five siblings. We lost one of our brothers, Michael, last July. Michael Roberts was one of 13 pedestrians killed in Montgomery County crashes in 2019. Michael was a Silver Spring volunteer firefighter when he was, when he became disabled, and more recently, a long-term county employee with the Department of Libraries. He was on his way home on May 31st and trying to catch a bus on North Frederick Avenue in Gaithersburg when he was hit by a 2011 Toyota RAV4 going at or above 40 miles per hour. And that was a speed limit on that road. That crash caused Michael multiple life-threatening injuries, including brain trauma, and he passed away due to these injuries a month later. The driver of the RAV4 and her son were not injured. I understand that Montgomery County has a long history of improving the safety of pedestrians with engagements in Vision Zero as the current effort. I believe that there is, is a lot of good work that has gone through these efforts over the past couple of decades, but today, I suggest that enforcement be improved. Specifically, enforcement... Enforcement to reduce distracted driving. I'll take a step back just for a minute. I think we all can agree that everyone has the responsibility to follow the law. I think that many, if not all of us, would believe that risks are, are still taken and the mistakes are still made by everyone who uses our roadways. Furthermore, the consequences of risks taken by a pedestrian, an automobile driver, or both, are greater on those not wrapped in two tons of steel.
Thank you for your contribution.
I'm wrapping up here. Michael was never able to describe what happened, but, but this is what we know of the May 31st accident and the reason why I suggest that enforcement needs improvement. One, Michael was not in a crosswalk. He had crossed three southbound lanes, the median, and was preparing to cross five northbound lanes. Witnesses saw Michael, and they also saw the Toyota RAV4, which they said was changing lanes without signaling. Montgomery County Collision Reconstruction Unit analysis revealed that Michael was hit at full speed and that there was no indication of 100% braking of the Toyota before the collision. Montgomery County CRU also subpoenaed the driver's mobile phone records and discovered that she was on the, on a call, which ended at the time the 9/11 calls were made by witnesses from the scene. Michael should have been in the crosswalk. He knew better, but he paid for his mistake with his life. Despite what we know from the witnesses and the driver's mobile phone usage, it appears that the driver is still assumed to be in full control of her car, as she was not fined or ticketed. If the witnesses saw Michael, the driver should have seen Michael. She only needed to have her eyes on the road. I've had several discussions with both City of Gaithersburg and the Montgomery County Police, Police Officers, and it's my understanding that enforcing the cell phone law is difficult. Education to reduce driver distraction with their mobile devices might help, but better enforcement of current cell law, cell phone laws is just as important, and possibly a review and revision of the law is necessary. Thank you again for your...
Thank you, and thank you for your comments. Councilmember Hockford, please. Councilmember Hockford, please.
I think all of us would want to, we're very, very sorry for your loss, and we want to do something about it. And I feel like you're, personally, I feel like you're absolutely right. We don't need, there's not just one solution to this epidemic of dangerous crashes all across Montgomery County and our region. We need the education that's come up. We need to re-engineer our roads. We just, you said you're from Silver Spring in my district. We just re-engineered and created a protected intersection at Second and Spring, and that cost over $1 million. We have lots of intersections in Montgomery County. We are not going to be able to re-engineer every one of them in our lifetimes with the funds that are available. What we really need to do, more than anything else, in my opinion, as the Transportation Chair, is increase our enforcement. We under-enforce our traffic laws. We do not have enough, a high enough percentage of our police force dedicated to enforcing our traffic laws, and you should know, we have state delegates here. We don't make our traffic laws. Our state delegates and senators do. I served in Annapolis on the committee when we passed the legislation to introduce speed cameras, and I was there when we introduced and passed, it took many years, but to ban texting and driving. Back then, many of us on the committee had a BlackBerry, and many people on the committee didn't even have a BlackBerry and thought that was crazy exotic technology. And the idea, and the only thing you could do on a BlackBerry, you all remember, is text. Nothing else. There's no other temptations built in there. So the idea that anybody was texting and driving back then was considered exotic and a crazy idea that anybody would do it. Now, not a fraction of the committee, everybody on the committee, everybody in this audience probably has a smartphone like this, and it has dozens of applications, and people aren't texting, they're tweeting, they're on Facebook, they're checking the sports, they're checking the news, they're buying and selling stocks. And distracted driving is responsible for 58% of serious crashes, according to Maryland State Police, 58%. So if we're going to do something to protect all of us, not just pedestrians, but also cyclists and also motorists, Vision Zero is also about protecting all of us, we have to greatly, more vigorously enforce our laws, and we have to use all the best available technology. We have red light cameras, we have speed cameras, we have school bus cameras. They have all been successful. They have saved many lives. What we now need to do is pass legislation through Annapolis, if this council will support it, to allow automated enforcement of distracted driving laws. We'll never have enough police on the street to adequately enforce our distracted driving laws. We have to do it in an automated fashion, like we do with red light and speed cameras, and this council needs to bless it before the state legislature will take the action with Senator Walzriker's bill that's before them right now. So if you agree with what I'm saying, you need to tell your council members and your state legislators to pass that bill.
Councilmember Juando, please.
Thank you for your statement, sir, and I'm very sorry for your loss. And you bring up a great point. We do need more enforcement. Actually, Police Department agrees with that. We're heading into the budget, and we're going to be talking about that. We do need more education. I think that will help, but we do need more enforcement. I think we need to be careful about some of the technology that's being discussed by my colleague. I've said that. There are serious privacy concerns with untested technology that's only happening in one place in the world, but your point is right. We need more enforcement, and there are technological solutions that are out there as well as far as that are being done in private industry, where you are in a car and the phone is deactivated, where you cannot use it. That's something that is being looked at by school buses and others. So their technology certainly has a role to play, and we need an all-hands-on-deck approach, but I would just caution people from taking tens of thousands of pictures of every driver and how that information could be used down the line. So I'm hesitant on that particular technology, but I think we need to look at everything available and certainly increase our physical enforcement as well. So again, sorry for your loss, and thank you for your statement.
Crystal, you were going to let you, you're the most patient person here, that gentleman. Thank you. Go ahead, please.
Yes, my name is John Grell, and I live in the Burning Tree Village Association in Bethesda. I have a simple question. What percent increase in the county budget for safety is planned to support the safety solutions to the challenges you're hearing this afternoon?
Well, it's more than one initial for safety because you're dealing with roads, you're dealing with the transportation side, you're dealing with the education side, and you're dealing with the public safety side. So it's really pretty much, it's almost the entire budget. But we will be going through budget, the budget process. We get the county executive's suggested budget on March 15th. We will go through public hearings. We'll have, I think, five public hearings on it. You're invited to give, once you see what is being suggested, we invite you to please participate. And Wade Holland has a question, or has a statement.
Yeah, just to follow up on the last thing about distracted driving, we do what we call high visibility enforcement efforts throughout the year, and we're actually going to launch in the distracted driving high visibility enforcement starting next week. So make sure your phones are down all the time, but we have extra enforcement out this week. To the question about the budget, County Executive Mark Alrich has recommended $266.6 million for Vision Zero-related things in the budget. We have these kind of pots of money for sidewalk projects, for pedestrian safety projects, for bike projects. We try and really use the data to tell us where there are the most problems at, but also use community input to really make sure the money is going to the highest need areas.
Lillian, I believe you have the next question.
My name is Doris Colley, and I go to East Silver Spring Elementary School. I'm in fifth grade and walk home from school by myself every single day. Even though I live very close to the school, my walk home is hard. I have to walk down a, walk down a hill that's basically like a forest, and then I have to walk up a hill with a heavy backpack. When it's raining, I have to walk in a stream of water. I have stories too, so I ask you, why don't kids get a stay, say, in all of this? Yeah. And my mom has something to say too.
Hi, I'm Karen, Doris's mom.
Let me interrupt you for one second. She deserves a great round of applause. Okay, mom, please.
So, yeah, so East Silver Spring Elementary School is one of the older schools in the county. We're in downtown Silver Spring, and that location is fabulous. Our kids go on walking field trips to Coiner Farm, to the Silver Spring Library, to Montgomery College. We have about 175 students that walk to and from school. We have Girls on the Run Clubs, we have Run Club, we have numerous ways that we use our neighborhood. Unfortunately, there are numerous pathways to our school that do not include sidewalks. Now, we are one of those older neighborhoods, and we do have a lot of residents who oppose a sidewalk, especially on Grove Street, which is one of the streets and pathways that optimally my daughter would use if she could, but unfortunately, she can't, and therefore, her walk home, it does not include a sidewalk. She walks in people's yards and into the street sometimes. And so my question is, and I understand that there is a bill that someone has proposed, but it looks like that might be aimed more toward newer schools. So what are your solutions for some of the older schools, like those in downtown Silver Springs, in terms of by right, having sidewalks on pathways to school? Thank you.
Councilmember Hockford.
Thank you so much. I agree. Joy did a great job. I would just suggest that we, Director of Transportation, Chris Conklin's here, I would just suggest we, if I could talk to you after the forum, that we do what we've done in so many other areas. We get some staff from our DOT and some planners to walk the route that you walk every single day. I know that's a great school and a great neighborhood, but it has some challenges, some transportation challenges, especially for pedestrians. Let us walk it with you and point out not just where sidewalks might be a possibility, but where shoulder enhancements or other things, improvements, to make the whole trip safer. And we can do that and then put together a plan together to make those improvements. Is that a deal? Thank you.
Councilmember Glaz, please.
Karen and Doris, thank you for being here and speaking up for what many other people have talked about. And I'm going to reiterate a comment that a colleague had talked about, about the old regulations and laws that have been on the books regarding building sidewalks in communities. And quite frankly, your neighborhood in East Silver Spring, I'll guess it was probably built in the 20s or 30s, and we have communities built in the 40s, 50s, and 60s, and these laws where a minority of residents can stop what is clearly a public safety need, I think it's time to update our laws. Hopefully, y'all come back when we start working on that, whether it is by regulation or by legislation. I think the time has come to update that. Thank you.
Thank you. Lillian, please.
Oh, I have the next question here.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Lorraine Lee, and I'm actually here as the representative of the Sanctuary Senior Housing Community. My concerns are, and I would like you to address, whether or not there is any special consideration for seniors who don't have the physical capability or capacity to, in this case, we have several residents here today. Some of them are in walkers, they walk with canes. There's quite a hill, they're in the 400 block of University Boulevard East. There is quite a hill to make it from the door of the building to where the nearest bus stop is. Many just can't do it. 80% of them just can't do it. And I do understand you weren't responsible for the, where the building was built. I understand that, but I would like for you to address, what special considerations are there for senior citizens in our county that can't maneuver the streets as younger people do and who are of advanced age? And I want to apologize to Councilman Hucker. I cornered him as he was coming in. I was the reason why he was late because I needed some answers, and he said, "I got to go sit down." So thank you, Councilman Hucker, for taking the opportunity to address my concerns. So if any of you can address those concerns, it would be much appreciated.
Thank you, and we're still going to give Councilmember Hucker a hard time for being late, so even though you're giving him a pious, but he would like to answer, please.
They give me a hard time every day, Lorraine. Don't worry about that. Thank you for your question. I'm always happy to be cornered. I'm glad we got to talk about it in the way, and let me just finish my answer. Yeah, our senior, we need to be, I think, have more supple, flexible transportation for our senior centers. Wherever there's a density of seniors that could get a better service on demand than just the regular ride-on route, we should be doing that. We are looking at ways to reconfigure our whole ride-on bus structure right now, and there's two things I have in mind, but I'd love to come and meet with the residents of the Sanctuary. It's a fabulous facility, but you're right, it's set back from University Boulevard, and folks with walkers aren't going to walk up there to get the ride-on bus. One, we might want to look at a flex bus in that area and just have a scheduled on-demand run to the grocery store and other predictable errands like that. And two, we have contracts with nonprofits that do great work, like the Jewish Council for the Aging, that provide seniors' transportation, and we could be putting you in touch with them and seeing if that's a solution as well. And that's true not just of the Sanctuary, but anywhere else in the county that we have that kind of need. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Ream, please.
Councilmember Hucker just said mostly what I was going to say, but we have a program that we created a few years ago. My colleagues supported my proposal to make it, called the Senior Mobility Management Program. And we're looking holistically at what the needs of seniors are and lining up different services so that when a senior contacts the county or through one of our nonprofit partners, we can identify, do they need assistance door-to-door, or do they just need a wheelchair-access cab, or do they just need a shuttle? There's different types of services that are most useful in different contexts, and the county has the ability to kind of filter through that and provide that support. So there's a Senior Mobility Manager at the Department of Health and Human Services, and that should be part of the conversation as you follow up.
Thank you. Lillian, I think you have the next question. No, they'll bring it up. If you raise your hand, hopefully, they will get there. We still have another 45 minutes, so. I appreciate that, but yeah, we'll get someone down here.
Hello, I'm Marty Bergoffin. I teach physics here at Wheaton. Welcome to Wheaton High School. Every day, for the last five years, I've ridden my bike from Twinbrook in Rockville to here at Wheaton, and I've seen an awful lot, and I'd like to share a little of that with you. I've been hit by a car on Veers Mill Road. It was no fun. I've broken ribs crossing the wet, red bridges on the bike paths. No fun. Every day, I see dangerous, bad driving. The most dangerous place I see is crossing Twinbrook Parkway, right there at the Twinbrook Rec Center, where somebody died two years ago. I go there every morning at about 6:45. There are always too many cars going way too fast, and I have a real hard time getting across there. My wife says the same thing. She's been hit by a car too on her bike. She also commutes. And she says Twinbrook Parkway at Park Lawn is the same way. Too many cars going way too fast every day. Riding along Veers Mill from Twinbrook Parkway down to Aspen Hill, as you know, no sidewalk on one side. That's crazy in the morning when it's dark and raining. The other side, there's a bike lane, but the bike lane ends halfway up the hill, totally useless, even dangerous. From Aspen Hill, I take backroads, which are really nice but quite circuitous, and then I take the bike path, the Matt Hansen Trail, which is really nice until it snows. They never clear the snow. They never deice the bike paths. The sum of this is that I don't think the county or the city of Rockville really takes bikes seriously as a transportation. They see it as a joyride on a pretty Sunday. I ride my bike every day. It's my main transportation around town. I really think it's important that you separate bike traffic from car traffic, that you provide sidewalks everywhere so that I don't feel like I'm going to get hit by a car again. And, you know, climate change is coming. We're all going to need safe, low-carbon transportation. Biking and pedestrian is the way to do it. I hope you'll take that seriously. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your comments. Lillian, can you or Crystal come down up front, please, so that we can get some questions here? But Crystal, you're next.
My name is Catherine Katzen, and I'm from Tacoma Park, and I'm very concerned about the threats to pedestrian safety that will be posed by the very large mounted equipment boxes that will get placed by utility poles if the council votes in June to allow cell phone towers on all our utility poles, including ones near sidewalks, homes, and bus stops. I am concerned that these boxes will obscure motorists' views of schoolchildren and block wheelchair and stroller access to safe walking routes. Thank you.
Thank you. Lillian, please.
Mi nombre es Mario Rivas. Orgullosamente viviendo el condado de Montgomery.
Good afternoon. My name is Mario Rivas. I live here in Montgomery County.
Soy inmigrante.
I'm an immigrant.
Orgulloso como le digo, pero a la vez preocupado.
Proud, and I'm also worried.
Por la situación de accidentibilidad que hay en el condado.
Because of all these, you know, accident situations here in the county.
Pertenesco a la asociación de grabado de la policía del condado de Montgomery.
I belong to the Association of Alumni, pardon de qué dice de? Citizens Academy.
Nosotros nos hemos agrupado en una asociación.
We have come together in an association.
También para velar por la seguridad de la población de la comunidad hispana en nuestro condado, pero no solo en el condado, sino que todo en el DNV.
To look after the safety of residents here in the county as a whole in the DNV.
Entre mis inquietudes tengo, y al menos lo sé, el condado trabaja mucho en la seguridad, mucho apoyo a la educación, a la seguridad del peatón y del vial específicamente.
And the county is making inroads in trying to educate people and also regarding road safety.
En base a eso, no es tanto que les vaya a hacer una pregunta, sino que les voy a pedir, les voy a suplicar.
So this is not really a question, but I'm here to plead to you.
Que por favor nos ayuden más en la educación vial y tanto peatonal para nuestra comunidad.
To please help us more in the education, road education, and also pedestrians' education.
Sé que el trabajo que ustedes hacen es grande, el apoyo es grande, pero creo que necesitamos más porque la comunidad va creciendo y se necesita más información.
I know you are helping quite a lot, but I know that we need more resources, more help because our community is also growing by the numbers.
Nosotros como asociación y yo como miembro o director de tráfico en nuestra asociación, nos hemos encargado en hacer pequeños trabajos que sabemos que van a ayudar a salvar vida.
We have, as an organization, and me, myself, we have done some work that on our own, that is going to help pedestrians in the community.
En base a eso, nosotros hemos hecho pequeños videos en apoyo a la comunidad para educarlos y también hemos distribuido pequeños decimosflyer o pamphletos para apoyar a la comunidad en base a la educación vial.
We have produced videos and flyers so we can support the community.
Ahora, mi pregunta es, cuál es el apoyo, los fondos o el refuerzo que ustedes tienen en sí para apoyar en educación vial y peatonal a nuestra comunidad?
So I'd like to know what the support is that you are going or and willing to provide in order to complement what the help and the aid that we as a community need.
Muchas gracias.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Navarro.
Muchas gracias. Como comentábamos, el ejecutivo nos ha enviado una petición presupuestal, y en esa petición de 266 millones de dólares, hay 9.3 millones para iniciativas de seguridad peatonal, pero también obviamente tenemos fondos en otros departamentos. Entonces, eso que usted acaba de hablar de la campaña que es tan importante, campaña de educación, es algo que vamos a estar examinando de una manera muy minuciosa porque es parte de esta estrategia. And so, what I was saying was that a part of what the executive has sent over for the CIP, there's about $9.3 million for pedestrian safety initiatives, but that's just one component. There are other budgets that we're going to look at during the other funds, through the operating budget, and also other departments. I also want to say that as, you know, I'm listening to you very intently, and although we have done so much work with our Vision Zero initiative, I do believe that a lot of this feedback is really important, this issue of looking at the regulations for approval of sidewalks. I think it's something that we can work on, that I myself think it is time to prioritize safety. Also, working with our senior, we have an amazing Commission on Aging, and doing senior audits, because it cannot just be one senior center at a time. I think that we do need to look at what is the access for our seniors, and really do a comprehensive, in my opinion, audit with a different perspective. Because what we've been doing up until now, even though I think has been very well-intentioned, as has been mentioned before, the county has changed quite a bit. So many of those regulatory processes, I believe it's time to start changing. So I just wanted to kind of highlight that, because also the public engagement campaigns, I think, are really, really important. And it is not about victim blaming, as sometimes it is misconstrued and such, but we do need to constantly educate our community as well and our drivers in terms of what are the risks that exist out there, and this just has to be constant. So I just wanted to kind of note that, that for me, it's been very informative to figure out how we can now go back and make some very specific changes to the way that we are responding.
Crystal, you were next. Might I remind everyone that we have about a half an hour left, so please try to keep your questions to questions so that we can hear from as many people as possible. Please.
Okay. I'm Mary Blocker. I'm the Traffic Director of the North Woodside Citizens Association, and I want to ask a question about stop signs, and then about stop signs in two specific intersections. I think that you're right, we can't fix every intersection, but if we could fix stop signs, because when we had the county out, ninety percent of drivers didn't stop, and they saw that in front of a very important stop sign. But Mr. Paylor of McDot told us that you can't legally have cameras at stop signs, but if we could legally have cameras at stop signs so people would stop, that would be great. He also said he didn't believe in pedestrian pushing lights, you know, to cross. I disagree with him, and my question to you is if you believe in them? And then I want to ask you about two intersections. One is on the new Talbot Bridge, when it comes on the north side at Fourth Avenue, the people on the Capitol Trail will have to cross two lanes of traffic, and there's only a stop sign there. And we desperately need some other solution, because nobody stops that stop sign. The other thing is, I want to know what you're going to do about raising the staff at the Department of Transportation here in Montgomery County? Because we've been working with them to get something done at Lucerne and Second Avenue, and the gentlemen there are very nice, but it's been six months now because they just don't have the time. They promised to get back to us, and they don't have the time to get back to us. So if you're going to do real Vision Zero, are you going to have more staff to help us do it? So what can you do to make stop signs stronger through cameras and through push-the-button pedestrian lights? And are you going to up the staff?
Well, as far as upping the staff, that's exactly what a budget is for. And there again, we will have five public hearings on that. We invite you and every neighbor to please sign up. And if you either, if you can't make it to the actual hearings, we ask you to please send an email or some other form of communication. Does anybody have one in specific? You want to have, yeah, go ahead.
Thanks for being here, Mary, and for raising all this. I hope I got all four. Yes, it would be great if we could have cameras, in my opinion, on stop signs, the way we can on red lights. That would be up to the state legislature. But again, if you advocate for the distracted driving cameras, that's one of the things that could be caught and could be on a fixed pole at a stop light, stop sign. Two, yes, I think many of us would like to see more pedestrian-activated crosswalk signals and hawk signals. Three, we should come out, again, if we haven't recently, and look at the Talbot Avenue Bridge, and have the most effective treatment possible to keep everybody safe there. And four, I'm for increasing, doing an audit of the DOT staff size and make sure we have all the resources we need to take this seriously.
Okay. Next is Lillian, please.
Hello. My name is Rex Thompson. I'm a former ride-on bus operator. I drove ride-on for thirty-two years, and I retired two years ago. Over the years, while working for ride-on, I've wrote several pedestrian letters to the county council and former Doug Duncan. One of them was published in the former Montgomery Journal about pedestrian safety and usage of cellphone back in 2000. And I followed pedestrian safety through my career in Montgomery County, which I still do. And I come down to one conclusion. I think the two words we're looking for is reminder, reminder, reminder. And I print up something here, like simple as a magnet for a fridge or a bumper sticker. And I think safety begins within the home. You've got to have that discretion, that discussion with your kids and vice versa, parents with kids. And I think the business community can do a lot more to implement pedestrian safety, like Safeway Drive, McDonald's, and all in the apartment complex, by asking them to put up a sign when you exit. One, motorists, about pedestrian alike. See a print of something here for the magnet, and it says, "There is someone, there is something our family need to discuss immediately. Do you talk, do you talk or text on your cellphone, driving across in the street? Always pay attention to your surroundings. Don't be a static stick. Come home, your loved one is waiting." That for the fridge. And this one here for the bumper sticker. In our home, we discuss pedestrian safety. Do you? Simple question. And all this can be done by adapting. Ask company to contribute to this, to this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Crystal, please.
Hi, my name is Pierre Terre. I'm a thirty-year resident of East Bethesda, retired federal employee. I spent twenty of those years bicycling down the Crescent Trail to work and back again. I still do that, just to laugh at my former colleagues who still have to work. Difficulty is, is that the powers that be have made getting from East Bethesda to the bike trail apparently as difficult as possible. Three quick things, you can put them in question form, Jeopardy-style, any way you want. First of all, the roads, Woodmont, Wisconsin, to get from East Bethesda to the trailhead, they're a complete and absolute mess. I don't mean any disrespect to anybody who was trying to organize this, but maybe they should have just carpet bombed downtown Bethesda and been done with it a lot quicker. Second point, the immediate access to the trail is also very constrained. That intersection there is just terrible, a mixture of traffic. Earlier this year, for the summer, you had part of that closed down because of upgrades, I guess, by the Honda or Accurate dealership. But it was, there was a sign up there saying that these things would be done by July the fifteenth. It was up there for three months afterwards, like a living insult to anybody who came up the trail all the way through November. And then the final thing is, it's bad enough that the powers that be closed down one of the ways to get to the trail to make room for this wretched purple line. But now, I hear you're not even going to have the tunnel? This is kind of crazy, because you're going to have a mixture of bicycles, cars, and pedestrians at a very busy place. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Reamer.
Thank you for your question. I just want to say, I really urge this council to put the funding in the budget for the tunnel, for the trail, alongside the purple line, to get users from one side of this county all the way through to the heart of downtown Bethesda. There is no question that this will be the single, this will be where the single most number of pedestrians and bikers are going to be coming into conflict with cars, is trying to cross Wisconsin Avenue at grade. And we can improve that all we want, and that will be good, but it's better to not have to cross Wisconsin Avenue and to be in a tunnel. And if we don't do that, we are guaranteeing that tens of thousands, if not hundreds of thousands of people a year, will be in conflict with cars when they do not have to be. And eventually, there is going to be a fatality. So I just think, let's put that money back in the budget, or in the budget, it wasn't funded, in the proposed budget. This is the year to add the funding. Let's add it and get it done.
Councilmember Fritson.
Thank you for that. I just want to endorse that entire comment. I mean, the Capitol Crescent Trail, this would be an example of taking away pedestrian safety infrastructure. I mean, it's bad enough that we don't have enough pedestrian safety infrastructure, that many of our roads were designed between 1930 and 1960 and don't reflect the realities that we currently have. It is absolutely inexcusable to take away pedestrian safety infrastructure and to not return it. It was a commitment that was made by the county. It's a commitment that needs to be kept. There are a million users that were using the Capitol Crescent Trail before this was shut down. We've already lost 300,000 of those. David Helms is shaking his head. He's the one who helped to get that data. But 300,000 users, so if we're talking about our environmental issues, if we're talking about public safety issues, if we're talking about Vision Zero and the infrastructure that we need, we absolutely have to fund this commitment that was made and something that was taken away from residents that needs to be returned to residents. And I am going to be working hard with all of our colleagues up here to make sure that we follow through on that commitment and reverse the county executives deleting this project out of the CIP, which I think was a disastrous decision.
Lillian, please, you're next.
Hi, I'm Eric Larson. I've had like a close, I've had like a close call with people at night where like dark clothes, like blindly cross. Like, it scares me, like, making my blood pressure go up, and people blindly cross with not looking, like jaywalking. I've seen more and more of that lately recently, and it scares me that I feel like I might hit them, like I may not have enough time to react quickly.
Okay, thank you.
Just very quickly, I appreciate you mentioning, oh, was it Gabe? I'm sorry. I'll be very quick. I have that same fear, you're not alone. I drive home down Randolph every day and I'm always worried about trying to be extra, extra safe. And I think in some ways it's good, because you want to be cautious, right, as a driver? Yeah, JFK. And I think it speaks to everything we're talking about. That's why we need the signals, the engineering, the design. We need the things to help both people, whoever you are, whatever, if you're in a car, you know, bicycle, you're a pedestrian, everyone needs this to happen so that they can be safer. So I understand that, I just wanted to speak to that, because I think a lot of people feel that anxiety, I sure do, and that's why this is so important. So thank you for raising that.
Councilmember Alvernoz.
Thank you. So the issue of lighting is a very significant one. In all of our county council sessions recently with regards to traffic safety, but also through our master planning process, we are focusing very much on lighting, because it's, everybody wears dark clothes. I wear dark clothes. I'm wearing a navy blue blazer right now, and at night, you know, that would be dark. So clearly, those are issues that we have to address. And I will say holistically, the tide is shifting in our county. Because unfortunately, there have been so many of these accidents, you can't go through communities now with a degree of separation, where somebody doesn't know somebody that he either has had a close call or even worse yet, been hit or killed. And so there is much more interest than there has been in the past in sidewalks. There is much more interest than there has been in the past for things like speed bumps. And sessions like this are so critically important, because we are going to be weighing decisions moving forward that will be controversial. One of the solutions that's been discussed is the narrowing of lanes in certain communities to create more of a buffer, similar to what Connecticut Avenue has right now, as you, that stretch in between East-West Highway and the District of Columbia line. You may not have noticed, but those lines are unusually narrow, and that has slowed down traffic, along with the traffic cameras that are there. So these are solutions that we're going to have to look at holistically, but are going to need a lot of support for us to be able to advance them. And so I've been so appreciative of these comments, because this really does give us, I think, the impetus and energy to get a lot of these policies over the hump.
I just want to add one quick thought here, as Councilmember Alvernoz just mentioned. Every single one of us on this dais is wearing dark clothes. It's because dark clothes are the professional attire for most people most of the time. My son likes to wear Nike hoodies. Almost every one of them is black with different variation of color. Telling people not to wear dark clothes is not a response to this problem. It is never going to work. I say that, I express frustration myself. There are times when I'm driving and someone darts out in a manner that I think is unsafe, and they're wearing dark clothes, and I say, "That person is crazy." Okay, I do that too. But I am under no illusion that we can tell people to stop doing what they do every single day, which is wear dark clothes most of the time, and that that is somehow an adequate response. It is not, we have to look to other solutions.
Crystal, please.
Yes, so I have a solution, maybe it won't work exactly. My name is Jeff Gates. I'm a resident of Wheaton, been here for twenty-seven years, and I'm a user experience designer, which means that I look at how things work and how people use them. One thing that you guys could do, talking specifically about wearing dark clothes, is start a program where you give out free vests, you know, with reflectors, so people can wear them. I mean, you have to think about how people actually will do these. Will compliance be total? No, but it will be better. Okay, so my guest question. I want to know, I realize this may not be your purview, but when my daughter was nine years old, she and I were riding on the Sligo Creek Bike Path, and because the roots have gone up on the, you know, on the path itself, she fell and lacerated her spleen. She is now 23. She survived that, although it was very nip and tuck. And if you're going to be promoting bike safety and a higher use of riding bikes, I'd like to ask you, to make this a question, I'd like to ask you if you can help get that, any bike path, in a condition that allows for safe riding.
Thank you. Thank you for your question. We'll get back on the answer on that. I mean, obviously, they can make things safe. We just have to make certain of how we're going to do it. Please, Lillian.
Hi, my name is David Kosterlitz. I live in Bethesda, and I'd like to draw attention to Bill 38-19, which was introduced by Andrew Fritson. I think it's a well-intentioned bill, but I think it doesn't go far enough, and I really think it needs to be strengthened in three ways. First of all, it should be county-wide, not just limited to downtown areas, or urban cores, as they're called. Secondly, there should not be a 15-day exception, okay, that they don't have to provide safe pedestrian access, as long as they're not going to block the sidewalk for more than 15 days. And I think you can get killed on one day. So I don't like the 15-day exception. Finally, it should expressly cover road construction and resurfacing, not just building construction. And I say this because I had an accident on my bike on Democracy Boulevard, crossing over 270, where the construction contractor, they were scraping all six lanes to resurface, and the very narrow sidewalk over the bridge over 270 was blocked by a tripod and a sign warning "motorcyclists," okay, and it said "uneven lanes." And this blocked that sidewalk, which is very narrow in the first place, and I wound up having an accident. It's too long to describe now. So I would like to have that bill. I think it's a golden opportunity to strengthen that bill, and if we're really going to believe in Vision Zero and complete streets and all of that, we shouldn't just limit it to downtown areas. And this is an opportunity, why have to go back to the well again and have another bill to cover construction? Finally, I talked to Chris Conklin, who is MCDOT, and after the MCDOT. And after the last meeting where they had all the, you know, commemorations of all the deaths, and I told him about my problem. And he said, oh, that would be easy to solve. He said, all you have to do is write into the construction contract that they will provide safe access for pedestrians. And I say, no, because it should be required in all county contracts. That's good public policy. You don't want to have to case by case go through. And the culprit in my accident was the signage subcontractor for the main contractor, FO Day. And it was a contractor out of Baltimore. And they should never block a sidewalk. I've been told that's bad practice. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Fritzen.
Yeah, I just wanted to thank you for your interest in the legislation and for your feedback. We'll take a look at all of the things that you've mentioned and we'll take them under consideration. I really do appreciate it. There's some really good suggestions there.
And, and can I remind everyone, please, that there is 15 minutes. And so please keep your questions or your comments to one minute or less so we can hear from more people. Please, Crystal, I think you're next.
Yes, and I'd like to remind everyone, we have a whiteboard on that side of the room that you can write your troubled intersection if we don't get to your question.
My name's Steve Lieberman. I live one block from Central Business District, Silver Spring, but in the residential area. And I have two questions. We've seen that the speed limits on major arterial roads have been lowered to 25 miles per hour. However, the smaller secondary residential roads, such as Grove Street, are still also 25 miles per hour. What's the status of getting the speed limits on those roads lowered to 15 miles an hour? Secondly, the county has been placing signs limiting the weights of vehicles on residential roads, in particular, in Silver Spring Park. We, however, not been able to obtain any enforcement of these rules, in particular, because we have been told there are only two officers who are allowed to give tickets for such violations. What are you doing to provide funding enforcement?
Councilmember Ream.
Thank you. I have been working with Delegate Moon and Delegate Corman for several years to pass legislation allowing lower speed limits in neighborhood roads. What we learned was that the default speed limit is 25 miles an hour. And so your cul-de-sac, unless it's posted otherwise, is actually 25 mile an hour speed limit, which is crazy. We've had a really tough time getting the state legislature to work with us on that. But it needs to really be a priority. The good news is in our urban areas, we can go. There is no floor. We can go as slow as, we can set the limit where we need it to be. But unless you're right at a school where 15 is allowed, you know, we have real challenges. So we're working with MCDOT and we have this new system in place. And I hope we'll start to see the next few years, the implementation of at least 20 mile per hour speed limits on neighborhood roads.
I'm going to ask my colleagues to please not answer any other questions so that we can hear from more of the public. Please, as quickly as we can, so we can hear from more people.
Okay. My name is Howard Offenheim. I grew up in Silver Spring. I live in Chevy Chase right now in the Rock Creek Forest area. I have two quick questions. One is that while, you know, sort of almost echoes the gentleman's here's comment concerning not just what developers do, but what the State Highway Administration and the Montgomery County Department of Transportation do during projects, you know, to protect pedestrians. I know that, you know, the Georgetown Branch Trail was closed for the, for the Purple Line project. That's a five-year closure, the answer for pedestrians, have them go a mile and a half out of their way along somewhat questionable road. That's, that's an unacceptable response. So that was number one. And there were a number of, you know, closing sidewalks, that, you know, putting up signage, all that's a problem. So that was my number one question. My number two question is that while we, it's been about four years since we last had a bad snowstorm. Every time we have a snowstorm, the lowest, the lowest priority is given to pedestrians and bicyclists. And the state and the county are a major culprit. I mean, it's not just people not shoveling their sidewalks. It's the county, the state and the county burying sidewalks, burying bus stops, so that people can't, making them inaccessible and making it dangerous for people to walk in Montgomery County for weeks after this major snowstorm.
Thank you for your comments. Crystal, please.
Good afternoon. I'm Eileen Finnegan. I live in the Hillendale area. 650 is our major arterial between, and I am most concerned about the area between the Beltway and White Oak. I really thank the state for doing some concept of context on state highways. But how do we get the detail to that? How do we get state highway to look at the needs along that stretch of road? Because the pedestrian and bicycle safety is terrible. Additionally, I like the fact that Park and Planning did do some pedestrian surveys on New Hampshire, but it's south of the Beltway. North of the Beltway is the business district, and we really need that kind of pedestrian work done in that section. So how does a community start really engaging with these agencies seriously to kick up the issues on New Hampshire Avenue? Additionally, a question for Mr. Conklin, I guess. With flash starting in May, I see pedestrian issues with the flash stations at Tech Road and near Stewart to be a serious issue. We need to really take a look at how will pedestrians cross Route 29? Because it is already a pedestrian mess. Thank you.
Thank you. Lillian, I think you have the next question. There she is.
Okay, respectfully, there's always got to be a contrarian. First of all, bicycles, all this stuff involves a statewide plan. There should be a grand plan to address all these things. Give you an example, I live on Georgia Avenue. The people that ride on Georgia Avenue, many of them come from Pennsylvania. Some of them come from northern counties. Some of them are my neighbors. Some of them are pedestrians. Some of them are all kinds of other bicyclists and all sorts of other things. That's a grand plan. You've got to come up with an overall plan. And I haven't seen it. You come up with these little segments of, little addresses, bicyclists and all that sort of stuff. Furthermore, the bicyclists and all these other folks have responsibilities now with the density that's increasing, you know, in these areas. I was driving, an example, I'm driving down Forest Glen Road, right near Colely Cross Hospital. There's this bike pathway or whatever you call it, right? So out of, just intuitively, I said, Jesus, I got to stop. I hit the brakes and stopped. And this idiot ran right in front of me with his bike and his little kid in a trailer in front of me without stopping. Now, why doesn't he have the requirement? Why aren't you having him have a sign saying, stop, and look, instead of me having to hit my brakes in an emergency panic mode? I was so angry after that. I was so angry after that. I could have killed that kid. And you would have, you would have been sitting there just louting about this.
All right. Please, no cross conversations, please. Crystal, I think you're next. Oh, here you are. Who was going to have the next question?
Hi, this is Charlie Crawford. And I'm, I'm sitting down because I have this physical problem right now.
Okay.
Anyway, the point is that I wanted to ask two questions quickly. On November 18th, I sent a letter to the county council, particularly to Tom Hucker and to everybody else. And I asked for, on behalf of the county, or guide dog users and the County Commission on People with Disabilities, I asked the question, basically, we have all these problems along the sidewalks that are created by the creation of these bicycle lanes adjacent to the sidewalk. Does anybody have anything against biking? Of course not. Does anybody have a solution? Well, maybe. How about doing what Washington DC did? Pennsylvania Avenue, right in the middle of the damn avenue, they have bike lanes. And everybody seems to be able to surviving. And all the people along the sides and sidewalks, they're doing their business. They're getting buses. They're not having to go to floating bus stops that I can't find because we haven't got an audible signal there yet to let me know that that's where the bus stop is. Sure, I know where the detectable warning stuff is and all that, but if I miss it, I'm screwed. So I asked that to get an answer within 60 days. 60 days. It's February. Where's the answer?
Thank you. And Crystal, please.
I have time for one quick question.
Yeah, I'm Garland Avenue, Rolling Taurus District. And I had a great experience with MCDOT. They came and did a speed study. The numbers come back and this is county's data, 70 miles an hour on this side street multiple times a week, 50 miles an hour every day. I asked, remember my neighbors contact Councilman Hucker's office, wanted to ask you to continue focusing on that, working with MCDOT, Sean Emerson in your office. 61709 is the number with MCDOT. All of you, I think, this is a layup. 70 miles an hour on side streets, totally unacceptable. Thanks.
Thank you.
We're going to have to wrap. That does it for the question and answer portion of our town hall today. I want to thank everyone for coming out today. Thank you to our council members for giving us your time. This conversation doesn't need to end right now. You can join us on social media with the hashtags pedestrian safety and vision zero Montgomery, as well as I'm sure some of our council members will be happy to stay and get some of the questions that we didn't get to today. So thank you, everybody, for coming. Good night.
What is your, what is, what is your question?